Public hearing to about the withdrawal of funds for facility maintenance from the equipment installation and labor expendable trust fund. Current balance of the trust fund is one hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars, and we're talking about withdrawing eleven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty cents for a Minuteman twenty-six inch max ride-on scrubber. This is a floor scrubber machine. So, public hearing, do we have a minimum time that we have to keep the public hearing open for? Okay, well, we'll give it till six thirty-five, I guess, just in case anybody shows up late. Is there any reason we can't bang out a couple of things during this five minutes? Like agenda review against the law? So, we will come back to public comment in case anybody shows up, but does anybody have anything for agenda review? Which one? Oh, yeah, that you're right, we should add non-public. Okay. Well, somebody want to take action on minutes? Resets?
Move to approve the minutes of January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five, February fourth, twenty-twenty-five, and February eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five.
All right, is there a second? Any questions, comments, or corrections on the minutes? All right, then all in favor of approving the minutes of January twenty-eighth, February fourth, and February eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed or extensions? Sure?
Of the February eighteenth, non-public sealed minutes, but I did not get copies to bring for you to read. So, if you want, I can put those on the next agenda, and they will be unsealed because they were sealed pending the action that was taken in the last session. So, do you want me to just hold those?
How long are they? Because we've got a couple of minutes to waste time anyway, so.
You can pass them around if you want.
Yeah, pretty basic. So, we need two motions, one to approve and one to unseal. We're not. Oh, gotcha, okay. All right. Is there a motion to approve the non-public minutes? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed or extensions? Great. I guess we'll wait on the rest for another minute. All right, we got six thirty-five, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. So, without any input, does somebody want to make a motion on the eleven thousand, seven fifty-nine, fifty?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second? All right, then all in favor of approving the expenditure of eleven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty cents from the Equipment Installation and Labor Expendable Trust Fund for an auto scrubber for facility maintenance? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, any extensions? Okay. Public comment, we still don't have, so we'll revisit at the end if anybody's here. And that brings us to board reports. On to.
Oh, Josh is at a conference, so I have his to read. I think it got put in the drive as well for you guys to see. Our department used the vacation week to accomplish the following. Kitchen hoods had their six-month inspection at P A Three Rivers and Hill School, and everything went well. All water backflows were inspected by the Pembroke Water Works at all three schools, and they all passed. Camera replacements were finished at P A, and this round of camera replacements was funded by the SAFE grant. Three sets of exterior doors were replaced at P A, also from the SAFE grant. The yearly state inspection of the elevators was done at P A and Three Rivers. Every single member of the facilities team was able to spend at least one day at the Northern New England Facilities Master Conference, which is put on by the New Hampshire Business Administrators Organization. Some were able to attend both days. They were able to take classes on anything from cleaning to safety to C I P to asbestos and anything in between. We find this conference to be very beneficial every year and truly look forward to attending it. It's from Josh. And Wendy had a commitment tonight that she couldn't make it, so she submitted hers electronically. There's a March family newsletter, and there's a link on her document if you want to check that out. The talent show was moved to March sixth due to the weather that was supposed to happen at your public hearing on that evening. The March conference for Pembroke Hills School only will take place on March twenty-eighth. Teachers sent out communication to families to sign up for time slots, so that just just at Pembroke Hills School. Girls on the Run starts at the end of March and is open to girls in grades three and four. Mrs. Murphy is a finalist for an online contest for America's favorite teacher, and voting ends on March sixth. Read Across America Week was a huge success. Students read forty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-five minutes over the course of two weeks, and fourth grade came in first place. Kindergarten registration opens this week.
Thank you. I guess we'll go to Pembroke Academy.
Okay, good evening. We celebrated a very successful winter carnival last, you know, the two days prior to vacation. That went very well. We are preparing the final touches for our N I S C visit at the beginning of April. Interestingly, we do not currently have a visiting team from N I S C. They have not identified a chair or a co-chair, vice chair, or any team members. So, our report is basically done. We're just waiting for the meeting on Saturday to happen, putting some final touches based on the outcomes of that, and then that will be submitted to the portal. But on N I S C, I'm not really sure what that's going to look like. Yeah. So, N I S C is, you know, obviously, it's a professional organization, but it relies on its members for lion's share of the work in terms of visiting teams. So, when a school goes through an accreditation process, N I S C facilitates the development of a visiting team through teachers and administrators from other schools in New England. And for whatever reason, there's always been kind of a challenge for them to get teams together, but it seems to be, that need seems to be more significant now than it has in the past. I was talking to Amy Parkinson two weeks ago, and she received an email from N I S C asking her to be a part of many different visiting teams, including Pembroke Academies, so, which she obviously can't do. But nonetheless, I just don't know that they are getting the participation that they used to enjoy. So, we're, the N I S steering committee is kind of interested to see how this plays out with N I S C. We're prepared, and, you know, we'll, we'll host whatever manner or team we end up getting, but that's kind of where we are with N I S C. Other things going on, I did meet with the senior class today to go over my kind of senior class, end-of-the-year kind of guidelines in that there are, you know, I discuss graduation requirements. I discuss the fact that every student needs to pass Senior English in order to get a diploma, and don't mess around with Senior English, that's like a public service announcement. Every year, someone tries to do that. And, you know, other guidelines, important dates, things like that. So, that went out, information went out to students and families today. Next week, we will begin our course registration process, and we will have presentations for three of our classes for registrations. And then we will be, members of the school counseling team will be visiting sending schools to go through the presentations there. Lastly, we are hosting our kind of traveling road show for the music department next Wednesday. Years ago, they used to travel to the other sending schools, and that became a very cumbersome kind of experience. So, instead of doing that, we have it here, and the sending schools are kind enough to come here, and that makes life a lot easier, at least on the high schools end, I don't know. But with all of the equipment and all of kids, it really makes more sense, so looking forward to that.
Any questions for Dan? Okay, then we will move over to Three Rivers.
We have a few things that happened prior to vacation, and then a few things about to happen. So, our girls' basketball team took home the league championship. They had a full, fully undefeated season this year, so that's pretty spectacular, and we'll be adding another banner to the gym, which is always fun to see. Similar to P A's Winter Carnival, we hold February Festival. So, that was the Friday before Vacation Week, and that's always, you know, one of the funnest days of the school year. Everybody is so into it, staff and students alike. So, you know, I think everybody had a really great day leading up to having, having the break. We have a group of fifth graders and some sixth graders, but they were incredibly motivated to get an environmental club going. So, they talked Mrs. Barber into being their club advisor. And so, in kind of working with P A's Environmental Club, there was this whole plastic collection drive that ended the Friday before vacation. And between the two schools, they were able to collect nearly four hundred pounds of plastic, which is actually shocking, because it's not hard, like it's plastic bags, like shopping bags, like thin, thin plastic items that amounted to nearly four hundred pounds. So, that will be all, you know, taken for recycling to the appropriate locations. But I thought that was just kind of mind-boggling how much they were able to collect. Coming up, Tuesday, next Tuesday, we have our S A U-wide workshop day, and, you know, Hill School and P A, but, you know, we are very proud to have several staff members presenting topics that day to help instruction and just, you know, teaching strategies for everyone else in the district. So, we're proud that we have some staff that were willing to do that. And then we are on the verge of testing season, so we're kind of in the thick of getting prepared for the state testing, making sure all student accommodations are all set up and ready to go. And then Eye Ready, Spring Eye Ready will be right after that. So, we, I guess, affectionately refer to it as testing season.
All right, any questions for Katie? Okay, I'll take just a second, because this is my last meeting, and wish Wendy was here too, but I want to thank the administration. I know that over the years, we've put extra things on your plate and asked you to bring us data for our meetings and our presentations and everything, and I really appreciate all of it. I appreciate Katie stepping up, taking on a new role, and Dan, we'll miss you. Sad that my kids have to go to school without you, but excited for our new candidate as well. So, thank you to the administration, thanks Sandy for all the time that you've put in for the board as well. And I don't think we have, we have anything for budget worth talking about, exec board?
Just a public service announcement. March sixth is the community forum to meet the two candidates for the superintendent position. Dan Mullis and Jess Bickford, our very own Jess Bickford, will be situated in two separate rooms here at P A to meet and greet, answer questions. We're hoping for a good turnout. The staff is meeting with them a little earlier in the day, but then we will have, open it up for the community at six P M. So, I hope to see lots of people here.
Thank you. Did I forget anything for reports? Okay, I think this is as good a time as any to bring this up. We will post something on our social media page as well, but I just wanted to make an announcement that there was some confusion around the school board ballot this year. We have three empty seats due to resignation last year. Ken is currently filling a seat that should be voted on again this year. The ballot does not reflect that. Our warrant was posted correctly, but the ballot is going to show two, three-year seats. We have three candidates running for three open seats. So, after some consultation with the Secretary of State's office, what will happen, or I assume will happen, I won't be on the board at that point, but at the first meeting subsequent to voting, that third person, whoever does, whoever gets the lowest vote total, will likely be appointed to that empty slot. The logic behind that is, A, that's what the secretary said would make the most sense, and B, you know, we have three open slots, we have three people running. If somebody wants to be on the school board, the folks that are currently running for school board make the most sense to do that. So, I wanted to announce that now so that it's not a surprise to anybody, so it's all very transparent. We just got this information yesterday when we got the first view of the ballots. So, it was a mix-up, but luckily, three slots for three candidates makes it sort of easy to take care of, so.
Question, so the person with the third-most votes gets the one year?
Right.
Okay.
Yep, that'll, that'll have to be how it is, because that is not on the ballot, so that will be the appointed slot. Okay, so, number seven, strategic plan for P A, not ours.
Okay, thank you. So, as you may remember, we had three goals that were the outcome of our collaborative conference visit with N I S C two years ago. One of those, which also happened to be a foundational element of the N I S C rubric, was that our school needed to have a strategic plan. For a while, we were kind of, you know, waiting, but, you know, it was very clear that N I S C said we had to do that. So, we put together a group this year. That group had, and the members of that are listed at the bottom of the strategic plan draft. Myself, Amy Parkinson represented the S A U. Kristen Doyle and Sally Johnson were not only teacher representatives, but they are the co-chairs of the N I S C steering committee. Janelle Landry was representing the school counseling department, and she's also on the steering committee. Josh Kofflin was representing facilities, obviously. Maureen Collins is a longtime paraprofessional for us, and she was representing that stakeholder group. Amy Bover is a case manager and a parent next year, so she was representing those groups. And Adam and Finley are two students of ours, so we wanted to have representation from them as well. So, that group met several times over the course of the year and landed on these three priority areas. I won't go like bullet for bullet, but the priority areas are school climate and culture, and creating an environment where all students and staff feel safe and respected. A priority area two, community involvement and engagement. Engage parents in their child's education through regular communication and involvement initiatives. And priority area three, curriculum and instruction. Maintain fidelity to a competency-based education, educational model through a collaborative leadership structure using reflective practices. The data sets that we used to land on these three priority areas were the, I would say, very comprehensive survey tools that N I S C has you use in preparation for the collaborative conference. And those, that data was supplemented with the data that was generated from the S A U Climate and Culture Survey last year for parents and students and staff. We did find that we needed to get a little bit more data on the student end, and there was a survey that was sent out and administered through advisories. So, that happened earlier this year. So, anyway, that, those were the data sets we used to determine these three priority areas. In many ways, you may notice that these kind of mirror the priority areas that N I S C identified anyway from the collaborative conference and the three things that we've been working on anyway in preparation for the decennial visit. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the strategic plan.
Questions? Yeah, thank you. We need to approve the statement. Yep. Okay. I didn't want to. Right, is there a second?
Second.
One last call for questions, comments? Okay, then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, and then we have a bus stop. Again.
After school today, Linda sent me an email, so I didn't think you'd mind if we slid that in tonight. It was short notice, but it's quick. So, Linda said that she had a new family that moved to six sixty-three Thompson Road, and she hasn't had any students on that road this year until now. There's one student going to Hill and one student going to Three Rivers, so she's asking the board to approve a stop at six sixty-three Thompson Road.
Okay. Second?
Second. Discussion? Any issues with Thompson, you know, just getting, because I know you come from Buck Street or you come from twenty-eight, so I didn't know if there were any concerns that she provided.
No, she's, there's been stops before, she just didn't have any this year, so she didn't share any concerns.
Any other questions? Okay, then all in favor of approving the bus stop, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed or extensions? All right. Okay, March meeting plan, did we do A B already? Oh, oh, God, this is the, okay, yeah, I got you, okay, sorry. Got distracted, sorry. A A, March meeting planning. So, Melly and I talked a little bit before the meeting about presentation. I think you can share that with everybody, and, okay, great. So, if you guys all want to take a look at that and look for feedback, I think we really tried to condense it down to get rid of a lot of the, and by we, Melly did all the work. I just advised. But, you know, you'll notice that, that much of the historical information, the data stuff is out of there. I think we are going to add back in somewhere, at least the cost per pupil, not like a graph or anything, but just the current numbers, because I think it's important that people know that we're still below the state average by a decent amount in that metric. I think that speaks to how we are using money responsibly. Other than that, it's mostly things directly from the handout, the summary sheet that we were provided before, and we're going to have those printed, right? Do we, did we come up with a number?
I asked Mark about, we usually make the color copies of his tax impact sheet and bring those, and he suggested five hundred for those.
That's where my head went.
So, we're going to make five hundred of those, and then because the, we're making so many copies, and the M S form is in the town report, we're not going to print that. We're going to print the warrant articles and the two-page summary sheet with the, in colors, so the graphs show. So, that will be, those will be the handouts that we have available.
Great.
And I do, just for your information, I do have a one call now ready to go. I didn't want to send another one today, but it's going to go out tomorrow morning, and I linked the P A, the S A U page where I had Lexi populate a bunch of handouts in one folder so that I can send people to that page for the, all the backup documents if they're interested before Sunday, I mean, before Saturday, and I also wanted to remind them that the meeting was happening and that it was a new time. So, that's going to go out tomorrow morning.
So, what, tell me again, what's in that folder?
So, she added the detailed line-by-line budget, the warrant and the M S form that's been posted, all of our co-curricular activities, our staff rosters.
So, could I be a real pain and ask?
One last time, you can.
Last time, I think this is good, though. On the, on the two-page summary, if we can find some white space, could we generate a Q R code that points to that folder? Because then if anybody wants to, you know, on meeting day, like, look at the full budget on their phone, whatever, any of that backup documentation, or even us, like, if we're, if you're sitting at the table going, oh, I wish I didn't bring my copy of that.
I don't think Lexi's made the copies yet, so.
Yeah, if she has, don't worry about it, but it'd be great to be able to, like, to say, you know, when somebody asks a question, and then we inevitably, at least once, we have to say, we don't have that off the top of our head, we can at least direct them. Yeah, yeah, on the blank page.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
She was a student, that's. But that you could put, you could put the Q R code on your end screen where the captions are going to.
Yeah, they could hold their phones right up to the screen. Yeah, I, I'll ask Amber to wiggle some room.
I don't know how far away. Jim, they'll be able to scan it, but.
Yes, yeah, yeah. I'll make sure it goes out first thing in the morning, so you have it early.
Cool. Yeah, we noted that. Grab the mic, sorry. She added it back.
I did, I know, I deleted something.
It was. Okay, yeah.
Sorry, guys.
That's what we call multiple versions of the truth.
And PowerPoint works better for me, so. I'll add it back in. There we go, that's what's supposed to be there.
But yeah, definitely.
Deleted something else.
Look for typos, look for things that we missed. If anything looks like it doesn't, like, I think the order of it flows pretty well, but I haven't given that a ton of thought. Anything that you see that seems, if you think there's some other piece of data, like cost per pupil, that is important and it's missing, we can find a spot for it.
Like, I added, like, our Facebook pages, you know, we, our strategic plan has started, our Facebook page, that we did the two informational sessions, and then I had a question, I don't know what you guys think. Should I go back through the meeting minutes and find that fundraising document? Do you think we should have something there where fundraising was such a big topic last year, where we just thank pals in our sports and district-wide, we raised, fundraised X amount of dollars, or should we just not have that there?
I, I think that should be mentioned somewhere. I don't know if that's the best place or not, but I think, I think that should be mentioned. Do you remember when that was, Octoberish?
Started looking for it, and I got to find it.
We'll see.
I can't remember. Do you think we should have?
I think at least a mention of just an overall number, if nothing else. Like, obviously, it's rough, the numbers that we got were rough, like.
The, just some feedback, because I was looking over Carrie's shoulder when she.
The, um, just some feedback, because I was looking over Carrie's shoulder when she had the document open. There's a lot of writing on that slide and the feedback has been that people can't see. So you may, you may want to make, like, several slides so that the font is bigger.
Yeah.
Um, and then can mention with that QR code, that document is also in that folder. So if you wanted to read it.
Okay.
They can get a copy of it right, right then.
Yeah, I tried to up the font from Andy's template because I couldn't read it, so I can definitely.
When it's up on a screen, it's even harder.
Even harder, yeah.
Yeah, or you might be able to, you might, yeah, you might be able to take the left-hand one and, and make it smaller this way.
Yeah.
And take the right-hand one and make it bigger, make it two columns or something, I don't know. Mess with it.
I know, I was playing with that one a little bit, because I have a hard time if reading it.
I'll look at it too and mock a couple of things up and see if I can find one that you like too, but, I mean, ultimately, it's going to come down to whatever you can read well to.
And then we have, I do have, like, the budget from the handout and then, like, the biggest drivers and the percentages increases. And then Andy and I were talking about this, because I just deleted the slide, guys. Did you see that? I just deleted one. But there's a revenue sources that shows the percentages.
No, she did it on purpose.
I didn't. I really like PowerPoint better, I'm sorry, than Google.
Everybody does.
It's just what I know.
Was that an email on the fundraising or was that in our drive?
It was.
Yeah, I think I might have just found it. I think I found it. Doesn't really have numbers. Right, it's a list of stuff. Um, but maybe we could make this pretty and put it in that folder. At least if we can't come up with a number. Um, if we could, yeah, if we could at least pull a number from pals, that would be cool. If we can, if that's something that we can get our fingers on. Send a copy.
I just added it in the Google slide to the very, like, slide ten. Andy and I were talking, I'm not. Quite sure if we should have these revenue, this revenue slide, because it is kind of confusing. About the food service and the revenue and.
No, 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 I'm sorry, the fir, the slide before that? I like that one. Yeah, but the details, I think, will lead to more questions than answers.
So is everybody okay if I delete that? Yes, bye-bye.
The handout's probably fine.
I think that's probably fine, but I think if it's on the screen and we start talking about that the food service program brings in revenue, I think we're going to lose some.
Yeah, it's probably, so I, I can't.
No.
Yeah, Gmail doesn't work for me when I'm connected to the school wifi for some reason, but it's in, it's in the, um, December third. And it's item six A. There's two six As, but it's one of them.
December third, six A?
Yeah, it's called hurdles and fundraising dot PDF.
Anybody else have suggestions? I'll.
I do.
Type up some notes.
So, you know, it's one thing, you know, you guys have heard me go back and forth with Mark on this a little bit. The affordability statement. In the mission portion of it, you know, responsibility to propose a budget that. You know, ensures the mission of schools and keeps the tax rate in mind. Um, I, I. And you guys tell me what you think. I really think we need to acknowledge that. You know, the, the property tax model is becoming unaffordable, especially for certain populations. I think we need to acknowledge that, that it's already unaffordable and that our efforts. In creating the budget are to mitigate the impact as much as possible. And I, and I don't know if that gets us in trouble, because somebody's going to look at it and say, oh, you're up two point six million or two point four, or whatever, whatever number you want to use, two point two. Um, and, but I think we need to acknowledge that, that, that is not, that money is replacing nothing. That was removed from the budget last year aside from getting back for parents. That's it. That's the only thing that has been added into this budget. And as well as this budget's been created. And we didn't have the Chromebook replacement schedule in there. Now that's in the budget. And so we made this budget and I, I was looking at, I can't remember the numbers, but it's a very large number. That we incorporated into the budget. And that was by leaving other stuff out of the budget. You know, so it's, it's one of those things, look, you know, if to say, look what we did to get to this number. I, what was it? It's like over two hundred thousand for the Chromebooks, right? Two, two twenty-three? Yeah, so I, I think it was around two hundred. You know, so that's stuff that was not in the budget before, but is in the budget now. And. It does not, you know, there, we have new spending. I think that new spending was around seventy grand or something like that. Or was it a hundred and seventy or seventy? Is it, yeah, it was, it was, it was, I don't want to say insignificant, but it wasn't a lot. But we added into that budget a lot more that had been paid for by ESSER funds and other grants in the past. Yeah.
Well, so what?
Replacement cycle.
What about doing a slide with a heading called challenges? And then we talk about the state tax model. We talk about expiring grants, um, ESSER and whatnot. Um, and I'm sure we could think of two or three other things to round out that slide of, like, things that are major considerations when we're building this button. Deferred maintenance or, or deferred spending, right? Like, the decision of the hurdles, um, like. Yep, increased benefit. I think retirement actually went in the correct direction this year, right? So we can't really call that one out. Right.
Yeah, total budget, thirty-three million, one.
Yeah. So he's saying like.
Yeah, I agree.
Like, the special programs is an increase of like twenty-eight percent. Another thing is employee benefits and things, those are kind of out of our control, but those are up thirty point five nine percent. I was going to have talking points under there about our biggest drivers.
And I'd like to, to ask that, um, Jess be sort of prepared for that one. That's, Peter's asked it a couple of times, and I think, like, that looks like a big scary number, but I think describing. Like how that's spread out, you know, just to, to kind of explain it a bit.
Um, we have an SE leadership meeting on Thursday morning, and that was in my notes, is to make sure that Jess and Amber both have all backup documents with them.
Cold.
There's a refillable station out there if you want to refill them too. Thanks, Dan.
Okay, I, I think that's a good, I think challenges. Around building the budget. And maybe that's your first slide after the twenty-five, twenty-six proposed budget slide. Like hit the high points of what our challenges were as we were working through it first, and then hit the slide that shows the budget number and the. Um, line increases and whatnot.
So we're over. It's two hundred and ten, basically, for the Chromebook replacement cycle.
All right, and, and I mean, my personal opinion on that, like, i- if, if that specific thing were to come up with a question is like. I don't know how to say this, but that's standard now. Like, I think most reputable school districts have a one-to-one program. Is that fair to say? Like, if we didn't fund Chromebooks, we would be doing some, we, we would not be. Meeting our mission of being a, a school of choice or a school destination or, or however you want to put it. That's. It's hard for some people to wrap their head around if they're the type of people that are in the mindset of, you know, it wasn't that way when I was a kid, or even it wasn't that way fifteen years ago. But that's the world we live in now, and if our kids don't have that, every other, most every other kid in the state does. And, and our kids are not going to be competitive amongst their peers. That's, that's.
Even, even the fact that our sending schools provide them in middle school, then they're going to get to high school and not have one, which makes no sense.
One more thing too, in the challenges front. I mean, I think it's, uh. If it's possible to capture the non-fiscal, non-material challenges as well. We sort of alluded to that in the earlier slides with the, with the strains that the, the last year's budget cut, but. And I think that it, it would be inaccurate to say that we didn't have those front of mind. As challenges when we were building this budget as well.
Right.
Flag that for people to let them know that we were thinking that. The, the, the one, I mean, and I use the Chromebooks and, as, as an example. We don't have to put the Chromebooks right out there. Some, like Andy said, somebody asks the question.
Yeah.
It's just, we need to acknowledge that for, you know, for, not just some, but many people now property taxes are becoming a challenge.
Yep.
Um, every year.
I think we should put that, that we acknowledge.
You know, and, and, you know. It, it, I think the way Mark says it, when, you know, trying to keep it affordable. Just shoots it out of the barrel, because everybody's, I mean, we all look at our tax bill going like, what? You know, this is crazy.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it's an emotional response that people have, like, you removed a lot of the facts from the budget. You know, like, like, uh, from the presentation, right? Because I think we had this discussion before, people have made up their minds, you know, or they, they feel one way or the other, and it may not be factual, it just may be emotional. Um, it's, what am I going to do? How am I going to pay this? And, you know, can it come on the backs of the kids? You know, you, our, our challenges, you know, as parents, when we had challenges, we didn't put it on the backs of our kids. You know, we showed that that's, that burden ourselves. And as a community, we can't put it on the backs of our kids. And, and that's. You know, the same.
I think if we do a challenges slide, what do you guys think about this? Like you said, explaining this, the state tax model and the expiring grants that are now built in. Things are built into our budget because we don't have that anymore. It might be the good spot to put the state per pupil cost, what we get reimbursed, how much we pay compared to the state, like.
Yeah.
That's, I think that might be a good place to put that.
Yeah.
We found out in the last little public session that there, there weren't many people, that was a surprise.
Right.
Yeah.
Little we get reimbursed, we get per kid.
And, and that's, I mean, cost, operating at a level.
Yeah.
You know, fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars below state, that is a challenge for us. Like, we're, we're essentially making do with less money per kid than every other district has to work with.
It's consistently done that.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
All right, um, keep those coming if they pop into your head, but we'll move on to other things. So I need to. Bring my screen over. I'll leave it with Mrs. Ruby sometime this week.
Before we get to the, that's a bold part of, while it's, it's bold. So are we going to amend? Okay, so now we have to figure out who's going to do it, how we're going to do it. Should we, okay. Okay. It's pretty simple, you know, so yeah, yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah, I think it's just amend the language of Article two to read and then write it the way you want it.
Yeah.
I didn't know if I needed to rewrite the whole thing. Or if I just need to say.
Yeah. Yeah, because technically, yeah, technically, you're changing the language of that amendment, so you needed to read exactly how you.
Budget committee's document.
Yep.
Well, I mean, you're, you're amending the budget committees. Yeah, I would, you know.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Yeah. That can be any of us too. Doesn't, it can be a board member or a citizen.
It now states that it's the budget committee's.
Right.
Right. And that's how it would start, you know, amending the budget committee's recommendation, however the warrant read after that.
Just read through the whole thing. Just change the number of the law. So, yeah, we got, we, we developed this, this signature, only the five people on the other one.
Correct.
So I'm just.
I mean, four of us.
Bet you we can get somebody to do that.
My other question was. When I need to, but when do I make that? Do I, after Melanie goes to her presentation?
I would, I'd do it as soon as Tom reads article.
Yes, yeah, right after it's read to the floor and they, um, move it and second it.
Or ask Tom to, like, if he says, I'm going to give Melanie a chance to speak to it, and that, like, to, but leave it up to him, that's the easiest thing. Yeah, yeah, I would tell him before the meeting instead, like, when you get there, fifteen minutes before it starts, just be like, hey, I'm going to, I'm going to be the one. He, he knows it's coming in, so, yeah. Cool, so that's done. Um, what else?
I do, but I don't know if I should say, so. It's just. Okay, so we get somebody. So hypothetically, because this won't happen, uh, hypothetically, someone comes up and says, I want to cut this by two, three, four, whatever, whatever the number might be, million dollars. We can amend that. Because essentially what would happen then is something's going to shut down if we end up with a cut like that again. Um, and is it me being petty, but I'm like, you know. We, we might need a, a special meeting after that or some, I, I don't know how this, how it all would shake out, but like, in the back of my head, I'm like, how do we address that? How do we address somebody getting up, doing a full, a, a, a non-factual foolish amendment like that? Because I don't want to get up there and literally call anybody stupid. I don't want to do that. But that's, you, you, that's what it is. It's, it's uninformed.
But at the end of the day, it's how the meeting works, so.
Right, so how do, how do we amend, you know, we, we can amend that back to our original number? Or do we just go scorched earth and say, hey, you guys don't want to fund the school, let's just zero out the, the budget and close the schools and send our kids somewhere else? You know, I mean.
Well, they can only do ten, right?
They can go up ten. They could propose to cut to zero.
Oh, I didn't know that. I thought you could only go up or go down ten.
Oh.
And I was doing a hypothetical here, but it's like, you know, this is how, you know, how horrific that kind of cut would be. It, it, it would be no different than zeroing out the budget, basically.
Well, the first thing is, is we're going to have the hand signal that I have with him, that we're going to take a break. So that we can all convene, so we can come up with a statement.
You grabbing me by the ear?
No, I'm going to go like this to my watch, to my wrist. Tom said, yep, and he's going to stop and give us a moment. We're going to have three to. Tom said, yep, and he's gonna stop and give us a moment. We're gonna have three to five minutes to work with the whole table to write a statement, to go back up there and say something. So it won't happen like last time.
I understand that, but you know, we, I think.
We need to prepare what we're gonna.
Before
Mm-hmm.
that eventuality may occur.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, let's, um, what else? So we've got Jason Lane for sound. I'll bring the screen. We've got captions. Oh, good.
Um, you're bringing the screen to the SEU office?
No, I'll just drop it off with Robin.
Oh, okay. Thanks. Thank you.
I'll, I'll make sure it's here when I. What am I forgetting, logistics? On anything in particular, or?
No, just discussing right now. Guys are in the trenches every single day. You have, you have to.
You will.
Yeah, you're in for going.
Okay. Um, well, we can always come back to this if people have thoughts. Um, but for now, I guess we will push on. So old non-public minutes.
So this was supposed to be a project for vacation last weekend. The flu went through my office. So our staff that was gonna go down into the storage room and pull open boxes, um, was not available to do that. So, um, we did find, I think back to two thousand stored upstairs in our file cabinets, but there's lots of boxes downstairs. Um, I think they saw some from nineteen-seventy-five, but I don't know how many, there might not be sealed minutes in there. They, that might not have been a thing then. I don't know. Um, so they know they have to open all those boxes and look through those minutes to see if any of them were sealed. So, um, as soon as we do that, you'll come up with a strategy by twenty-twenty, twenty-thirty-three, is it? I think.
Yeah.
Um, to have those all reviewed. So we'll continue to work on that. Even if it has to go into summer, um, cause it starts to get busy, then we'll do that. But at some point, we'll have all those boxes opened and looked at.
Enough. I think that's right. Okay.
Deadline, there's deadline. Yeah, I just remember what grid I could know. I think, I feel like it was.
Okay. Questions about that? Okay. Um, then I'll turn it over to Carrie and Melanie for policy.
Okay, so for IJL, library material selection and adoption, uh, we're actually going to adopt that policy. Um, same thing with KEC reconsideration, what we're gonna, of instructional materials, we're gonna adopt that one. Uh, the ones that are first reading, I think we should just move those to second reading because I kinda focused on the other ones. Um, and then Sandy, this is, I'll, I have my paper here if you need it. But, um, we're going to, I, motion to rescind.
Agenda for Sandy because it's got the list.
She's got one. Okay. All right, so, uh, we're gonna rescind GCQC. Rescind GCRC. Rescind HP. Uh, JFAA and JICA rescind. So five rescinds. And then we're going to move the IMG to a third reading, um, because there's still, yeah, admin's still looking at that one. Yes, that's a rescind. Yeah, sorry, I didn't say that at the end. And then, yes, is we're gonna move to third reading. And then do you wanna talk to ACAC or do you wanna?
Okay. Um, so when we received, so we, uh, we were instructed to go back to the old Title IX regulations. School Board Association did quickly get out new policies, and you probably saw those in your membership portal. Um, and their recommendation was to waive the readings of ACAC, that that was the most important policy to get done right away. They suggested within thirty days of them sending it, um, which is the prohibition of sexual harassment policy and grievance procedures. Um, so I would suggest that you do that tonight to get that approved.
Okay.
Pages long. The only question I had, and I didn't have time to go into our website, is it lists like twelve different other policy names, and I just wanna make sure we have the same names. Okay. That's the only thing. Okay. Ton of information on that one. Okay, so, uh, we will move to ex- or adopt the New Hampshire School Board Association policy, ACAC, pro-prohibition of sexual harassment policy and grievance procedures.
Wait, sir, second.
Second.
Wait, any discussion on that one? Okay, then all favor of adopting the NHSBA language for policy ACAC, please say aye.
Aye.
Right. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I was gonna say, do you, can, can we do a blanket?
Rescind those?
Yeah.
Just name them all.
So, okay, so motion to rescind policy GCQC, GCRC, uh, HP, policy JFAA and policy JICA.
Second.
Second.
Questions, comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstentions? Right?
Then just one more. Um, motion to adopt policy IJL and KEC.
Wait, sir, second.
Second.
Discussion. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Awesome. No, that's good. This is, I'm, I'm glad we got this going. There, there's been times over the years where we've really gotten behind and bogged down, and, um, I think setting up this committee to do this was a great thing. You guys are doing a really good job. All right, that gets us through nine. Public comment is still no. Um, any informational items? Uh, oh, um, speaking of me getting all the emails fourteen times, prom information went out. So for the millions watching at home, review it so that we don't have, so you don't have to come to one of these meetings later and ask us to amend the policy because you forgot to read it. Check it now, check it early, check it often. Yeah, happens every year.
Anything informational, just for the viewing public, March eighth, nine AM, Pembroke Academy for the school district meeting.
Thank you. Um, do you need public comment? Cause we just, you just missed the second public comment section, but I can reopen it if you need to say something. Well, go to the mic and tell us who you are. I'm a little bit nervous because she's got my high school yearbook.
Bit short and sweet, but I just wanted to say thank you for your service to the Pembroke community, Andy. Um, we're proud of you and we appreciate what you've done, um, in your time here. And I've heard through the grapevine and the community that at certain staff members' retirements, Andy makes light and joke, jokes with people about things, kinda puts the spotlight on them. So I thought it was only fair to reciprocate. So, so I dug up Andy's senior yearbook. And his senior yearbook, he was voted most likely to succeed, but he and the person that he was voted alongside are holding a one-dollar bill. Shared between the two of them. So we, we've often laughed as, uh, as early twenty-somethings, that if that's his vision of most likely to succeed, we might, we might need to count on something else.
But I made it. I have a dollar.
Um, but we've talked about that and we've kind of said, um, as a family, that perhaps it was a, a picture into the future that success would never be measured in our household by money or the amount in our bank account, but by the service to our community and our fellow neighbor. And if that's the competency by which we're measuring you, I give you a four. So thank you for your service to the community.
Thanks. Uh, we technically still have about thirteen more minutes for public comment. If anybody else wants to say. No, Miles? No?
Come on, you got something.
Okay. All right, then we'll move on. Uh, did, anything else for informational? Okay. Falling five-minute recess because Tom told us we could.
Third base coach.
Quiet coyote. Quiet coyote. Oh my goodness. I feel like I wasn't here long enough for a plaque. Fair enough.
So, um, all joking aside, Andy, I can't think of anyone more deserving of a plaque. And I just think back to, I'm glad you're here because I also wanted to mention and thank your family because of the sacrifices you guys made of the nights, um, that your dad and your husband were with us instead of you. And that doesn't go unnoticed, and that's a huge debt that we owe to you too. So thank you for that. Um, I remember our eleven o'clock meetings during COVID and how many we had, um, with mobs of people. I remember you always standing up for what was right for students and what you thought was gonna keep everyone safe, and you took a lot of heat for that. Um, none of us knew what we were doing. None of us knew what the right thing was, but we always did it with students in mind, and their safety was always number one. And I know Gene was here with us through that too. Um, your leadership and your knowledge inside and out of the budget, of every piece of paper that you needed for a meeting, um, the hours that people didn't see you preparing for meetings, the hours that you and I either spoke or texted, um, with all the stuff that was going on. I can't think of anyone else that I've worked with that spent as much time and had as much devotion, and that's why you get a plaque. So the plaque says, um, Andy Cammage in recognition of and appreciation for six years of dedicated service to the Pembroke School District as school board member and chair. We will miss you.
And go crochet club.
Your, um, family didn't wanna stay for non, after non-public, we have cupcakes and you guys can eat them in non-public, so the public doesn't have to watch us. But you guys, please take cupcakes home before you leave. Okay.
Thank you. And I've said it to everybody I've talked to, but I'm not going far. I'm right around the corner. Feel free. My phone number's not gonna change, I don't think. Um, so, see, see how Saturday goes, I guess, but, um, I'm happy to help in any way that I can. Um, who knows? I might be back someday or on NBC or something. Can't stay away. Okay. Um, well, non-public's next, so I gotta wait until my family gets kicked out, I guess.
It's a pumpkin.
An envelope in an envelope, that's something. Oh, and I did, I actually remembered tonight, but I was already halfway out the door. I'll bring you my iPad on Monday. Oh, that's a good one.
Yeah.
Holy dang.
Pipe him out of the, out of the school?
Oh, yeah.
I think we should, we should, we should do that. Did she bring her pipes? You could pipe him out of the school. Why? That would've been great.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Night. Yeah.
Back from recess.
Okay. So the board has need to go into non-public session in accordance with New Hampshire RSE ninety-one dash eight colon three roman numeral two, small letter C, which is matters which if discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the board. I will call vote to go into non-public at seven-thirty-six. Ken?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yep.
Melanie? And I'm a yes.